This time I would like to call to order the Monday, November 16th meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 4:00 PM we had a work session to discuss solar arrays. And at this time, I would like to call on Reverend Don Hollis Custer to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us play. Gracious, loving Father, we come before you this evening. Lord, we give you praise and thanksgiving for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. Lord, we ask that your Spirit would be in this room, guiding the agenda and the discussions and the decisions that are made here this evening. Lord, right now, we also would like to lift up the victims and families of terrorist attacks, most recently those in Paris. Lord, may we be a country that is united under you and agents of your peace, spreading your love and your peace to all the world. Lord, we pray this in your son's holy and precious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, as I was speaking with Ms. Custer a while ago, she has gotten married since she was here last time, so she was a Hollis last year when she came, and now she is a Ms. Custer. So congratulations to her. On the agenda, under new business, I would like to remove consideration and approval of appointees to the Land Use Plan Steering Committee. And I would like to add a closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and GS 143-318.11A6 to discuss a personnel matter. With that, we could approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also, I've got two board appointments that I'm not ready to make. So D1 and D2 and D3, I'd like to go ahead and take them off of the agenda also.
Okay.
And then with that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Have a motion for approval. You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under administrative reports, Currituck County Department of Travel and Tourism Staff Recognition, I believe Ms. Tamrin Hoogler, the Director, has some recognition for some of her staff. So please make sure you introduce everybody, even those that don't come forward.
Tamrin has delegated the speaking to me. My name is Stuart Chamberlain, and I'm the Marketing Director for the Tourism Department. Y'all know Tamrin, our boss. Greg Schworga, who is the Visitor Center Manager. Dan Klausley, who's the Creative Director. Cola Lynch, who's the Promotion and Events Coordinator. And Michelle Ellis and Kay Beasley are currently promoting the county at a travel show in New York, so they could not be here tonight. But we really appreciate y'all letting us speak with you this evening. Each year, the Destination Marketing Association of North Carolina has an annual leadership conference. This conference discusses different trends in marketing tourism. It discusses challenges that currently face the industry, and it also celebrates the successes of different destinations throughout the state. And, you know, we can no longer get away with just promoting a destination. We can't tell people they're going to have a great vacation in an ad. We can't tell people that their experience is going to be unique. So instead, we're telling stories. You know, we're telling stories from locals, citizens, business owners, and even visitors. And the hope is that these stories inspire others to come and experience that for themselves. We want people to come and come again and again and again, and hopefully create traditions with their families and pass those down for generations to come. So really, every person that lives and works in Currituck is part of this story and part of this experience. And I think we should all be very proud of what we've been able to accomplish, and, you know, we are honored to be able to share these stories with the world. With that said, we're very humbled and honored to announce that Currituck County won two first-place awards at this year's conference. We compete in the large-budget category, which puts us against destinations like Wilmington, Asheville, Raleigh, and Dare County. And our awards were for advertising and social media. So we are very excited about that, and Greg is the Van of White of the evening. So again, we want to share these awards with everybody in the county. We can't create the experiences and tell these stories by ourselves. You know, it's an exciting story for us. We're excited to see what comes next, and we really appreciate the support and hope everybody will share in this achievement with us. So thank you.
Does platinum mean first place?
It does.
Okay. You didn't tell us what place you finished.
Oh, well, yes, I meant to say first, but...
He did? Okay, I'll wake up.
Yes, but thank you.
Great job. I'm sure some of the board may have something to say. Does any board have any questions or comments?
Keep up the great work.
We do appreciate all that you do in keeping Currituck recognized out there and getting the awards. It's been a long tradition in Currituck to get those awards, competing against Charlotte, Wilmington, and Raleigh, and keep up the good work. Thank you. Next item is public hearing and action on PB 1514, Currituck Homes, Inc., request to amend the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 6, to modify the water supply standards that would exempt certain developments from connecting to the county water system. Mr. Woody, would that be you?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment request to address the county's water supply connection standards in the Unified Development Ordinance. The text amendment was submitted by Jerry Old, representing Currituck Homes, and the amendment is intended to amend the county's water supply standards to exempt subdivisions located beyond the formulated distance from connection to the water system and from providing the performance guarantees that are required typically. And I'll get into that more into that in a second. Additionally, this amendment also proposes that any performance guarantees or any monies the county may be holding at this time for previous bonding of water line extensions be refunded and returned to the developers with interest. Under the current ordinance, so that's what they've asked to do, and to give some context, right now in the county's ordinance, we require that if a subdivision's proposed beyond a formula distance, the formula distance is created by the number of lots. So if you have a 20-lot subdivision, it gives you a distance. And if that subdivision is greater than that distance from a county water main, they have to provide a performance guarantee in the form of cash to cover the cost of the future water main extensions and connections in the subdivision. If the subdivision is, once the formula distance is applied to the 20-lot subdivision, you apply the distance. If that subdivision is located within that distance of a county water main, they're required to go ahead and make the connection. So what the ordinance currently does is it provides a mechanism in which, at whatever time the county water system is serving this subdivision, there are funds in place at that point to connect that subdivision to the county water system. I do want to point out one thing on the front end of this presentation. There's been recent changes in the General Assembly that now require that performance guarantees required by the county have to be accepted in the form of a letter of credit, a bond, or cash. So previously, the county has required that cash deposits be placed for performance guarantees. It appears that moving forward, the county may be obligated to accept other types of performance guarantees. So I do want to get that out on the table in the early part of this discussion. But setting that aside for a second, the Board of Commissioners has heard this type of requests multiple times over the years. This is actually the fourth text amendment on this topic since 2011. And to give a little context, the county has always, for many years, has had the formula requirement and the connection requirement, and we've always had the, you know, the idea that once the subdivision is beyond the water system, a reasonable connection distance, they provide the performance guarantee. In 2011, the Board approved an amendment to the UDO that allowed the developer to provide the cash performance guarantee if they were subject to the formula distance, but then after three years, they could replace that cash guarantee with a surety bond or a letter of credit. Down the road, in 2014, the Board considered a text amendment at that time that would actually exempt subdivisions located more than one mile from the existing water main from connection to the county water system. So that amendment said that if your subdivision is greater than one mile from a county water main, there's no formula distance, there's no performance guarantee, you're just exempt from connection. So the amendment tonight's similar to that in the fact that tonight's amendment is saying that if you're outside of the formula distance period, it kind of dropped the one-mile buffer requirement and said if you're outside of this formula, you don't have to provide the performance guarantee and you don't have to connect. In 2014, the Board considered another amendment to the UDO that required all lots except for family subdivisions to connect to the county water system and provide the performance guarantee. Additionally, in that amendment, and that's the most recent one, this board probably is most familiar with, the county also required that water mains must be of a size to serve a fire hydrant, must be a minimum of eight inches in diameter. Now they're modeling and sizing requirements for developments. There's a clarification of fire hydrant spacing, and that amendment also provided a reimbursement contract where if you actually, if the developer did install a water main, they were able to recoup some of that investment through future connections. So that's where the ordinance stands today. Couple land use plan policies I want to note before moving into the staff recommendation. One policy in our land use plan kind of promotes the idea that Currituck County endorses utility extension policies that focus utilities and services in existing developed areas or areas targeted for growth such as full service. So the idea is that you want to have utility policies that actually promote growth in the areas where you can most handle that growth and you can best manage it, as opposed to having utility policies that allow growth in areas that perhaps are more difficult to manage or provide or have the impact of stressing county services. So we've got a land use plan policy that really wants us to focus our utility extension policies. Additional policy to keep in mind in the land use plan is Policy PP3, which states the cost of infrastructure, facilities, and services. Examples, schools, parks, water supply, et cetera, related to the demand created by new growth shall be borne by that development. And so what that means, in other words, is that any demand created by new growth, our policy is that that new growth should bear the cost of that demand on county services. So I would argue that our current ordinance structure with a formula requirement and then either the connection or bonding requirement is consistent with both those land use policies in terms of promoting utility extension policies that promote growth in areas that are more desirable for the county, as well as making sure that new development kind of bears a cost that that development has on county services and infrastructure. So for those reasons, among others, the staff is proposing denial of this text amendment. We think the amendment has the indirect effect of making areas outside of full service more desirable for new subdivisions and by reducing development infrastructure costs in those more remote areas. Staff feels this type of leapfrog growth increases demand on county services overall. Our position is it's not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan because it does, because it does not focus water service in existing developed areas such as full-service areas, and it does not place the cost of infrastructure related to the demand created by new development on the developer, and it does not result in a logical and orderly development pattern. The Planning Board heard this request at their last meeting. They did recommend a modified approval. They recommend approval of the request with the performance guarantee still being required but being refunded after 10 years if the county water line is not extended to the subdivision. They recommended keeping the current formula distance, and they also recommend that any monies that are now on deposit with the county as performance guarantees be fully refunded after 10 years if the county water line is not extended to the subdivision. And with that, I can answer any questions the board has.
Questions for Mr. Woody.
So what you're saying is the county is, if you're, we won't allow leapfrogging anymore, you're saying?
I think our land use policy generally discourages that type of development, and staff would argue that partly the utility extension policy helps to do that.
So if the water line stops here, and I want to build out here farther, let's just use, you know, going down South Mills, and I want to build out there, I've got to pay the money up front?
You do. You've got to provide a performance guarantee. So you would pay the same, you would pay a similar type cost for your water line infrastructure that a developer would in an area already served by the water line.
Even though there's no water line near me?
Yes.
And that bond would be, would be by a bond, no longer by cash?
Right now, it's been, it's cash right now, but again, the county attorney may want to clarify this. My understanding is that the General Assembly has made some changes that would require the county to accept cash, bond, or a letter of credit.
The statute now allows for the developer to make the choice, not the county impose a choice of security.
So I do think regardless of your decision tonight, that's something that's going to occur, is you're going to have a choice of the type of bond you provide or performance guarantee you provide.
And we're asking for them to hold that bond for 10 years?
The Planning Board recommended that the county hold it for 10 years and then refund. The current ordinance holds a performance guarantee until the water lines extended to the area of that subdivision.
And if it never is, it stays there anyways?
Stays there, stays there until the water lines extended. That's correct. And if that took 50 years, then it would be 50 years.
Yes, sir.
Two questions. Regardless of what we do tonight, it's going to require a change pursuant to the General Assembly's recent legislation. Is that correct?
That's correct. That will need to be included in the UDO.
Two. Question is, if we were to approve this, i.e. drop the requirement for a bond or that, who would bear the cost of installing the water infrastructure were it to be installed at a later date?
At that time, it would be, it would be the users of the water system through the enterprise fund.
So it would be the county taxpayers, whoever is involved, whoever is hooked up to the water wherever they may be?
It wouldn't necessarily be taxpayers. It would be people who are currently on the water system, and that doesn't necessarily have to be one and the same. But it would be users of the water system would pay.
These are, ostensibly, these would be, a large majority of these people would be those who have already paid in the form of either the passed-on cost when they bought their lot and their water tap. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly, one of the, one of the goals and objectives we had back in 2014 was, I mean, the county didn't have any money at the current time paying off the water system bills that we have now, but in a future period of time, we're going to get in a positive cash flow. And the thought process was, I think, as we talked about it, was at that point in time, the county is going to move towards installing water lines and upgrading services, Mr. Scan. Is that not correct?
That is correct. As, as we move forward, some of the, the current debt on the mainland water system will be paid back, and so it will free up money that has historically been budgeted for debt service that can go to water line extensions.
So, so we'll kind of get back in the business of extending water lines, and I guess it come down to the options as we talked about this thing and looked at it. It was, it was some tough decisions, I think, for all of us, but the decision come down to, do you, do you put the onus of upgrading these services and putting these utilities? I mean, we've had people in front of us all the time screaming and hollering because they don't have any water in their neighborhoods and don't have any fire protection in their neighborhoods. And we've got volunteer fire departments out here that are saying the same thing. I mean, you know, we, you know, we've got trucks, we've got, we're hurting with staffing, and we're having to run all over everywhere to try to find a pond to draft and this, that, and the other. And it's kind of a futures thing. It is, I guess the question to me is, what do we, what do we want the water system to look like in the county 20 years from now? And, and who's going to pay for it? As it is now, I mean, I think you all know as well as I do, it's going to be mighty hard to come back in and subdivisions that are being built that don't have some type of contingency there for water to come back in and tell those folks, well, you know, who's going to pay for it? Well, guess who? So it just, to us, or to me, I thought it was like a cost of doing business for the developer. I mean, if you're going to have water systems, somebody's going to have to pay for it. And the question is, do we pay for it now, or do we fight the battles later on and have it paid for that way? So, you know, that's a question the board will have to figure out.
And to piggyback on that, the same thing in 2014, a lot of the discussion was on the quality of water because a lot of these secluded areas that were being developed had poor water quality because of wells and that type of thing. So that was another decision that we had made to extend that, just like what Commissioner I was saying, is, is for the, for the fire protection and also the quality.
Well, one of the things we have discussed, and I've advocated on more than one occasion, is alternate forms of guarantees such as bonds or letter of credit or whatever, other than, than holding somebody's cash for all these years. I mean, let's think about what the goal is, and if there's a way to get there without holding somebody's money for 15 years or whatever. I mean...
I think, I think the state's done that now for us.
Well, maybe they listen to me. But I just think it's something that we definitely have to discuss, and now the state has said we're going to look at it, so maybe it'll, it'll force us to make some adjustments on how we look at this.
I certainly don't have any issue with that at all. I don't know why, I can't remember why it turned out the way it did before. I just, I just really don't remember, but I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah. So we have, I believe Mr. Hyman is representing the applicant, so Mr. Hyman, if you'd like to come forward and present your case.
Thank you. My name is Eddie Hyman with ET Hyman Survey, and I'm here to represent the applicant.
Excuse me.
Yep.
You might want to officially open up the public hearing.
Mr. Hyman, I would like to officially open the public hearing and recognize you as representing the applicant.
Thank you very much.
Long day.
I agree. What I wanted to do was try to bring to life what this text amendment or this ordinance really does on how it impacts a development by real numbers on a real development that we're putting in up on Backwoods Road, up just south of the Universal, it's not, I don't think it's Universal Park now, but the trailer park that's up there. This is 16-lot subdivision, and let me clarify, we talk about bonds, we talk about letters of credit and all this. That's, it's all still real money. And in this case, this cash that gets paid to the develop, to the county for a service that they're not going to get or is not available anytime in the near future. But I wanted to explain the cost as it came back from the Water Department, what the fees are going to be for this 16-lot subdivision. The subdivisioning that we're talking about will have to pay, as it's calculated out, the off-site and on-site water lines of 3419 feet of eight-inch water line at $136,760. Three fire hydrants at 5,000 each. The interest, 15% on top of that, is what you have to pay because of the expected time delay that you might see before you get to actually install the water line, which brings a total of, to $174,524 for the water infrastructure, the possibility of the water infrastructure. And then $5,000 a building permit for tap fees, which is another $80,000 for this 16-lot subdivision. It brings the total to $254,524 that the developer has to write a check. It's not a letter of credit, it's not anything else. It's a check to Currituck County for a utility that they may not ever receive. This particular project is about five miles away from the nearest water line, and likelihood of the water getting extended that far within the window of opportunity that would really benefit the neighborhood is very low. There's no long-term or short-term extension plans that I have seen that have been developed. I know we talked about at some point being into the plus side of the Water Department and looking into water line extensions, and that's a good possibility because it should be managed like a business, and you provide the service to the customers and the customers pay for it, and you extend a little further out and do the same. But in a subdivision, when the houses are built, the window of opportunity pretty much closes for the water to come in. When I say that, the wells have to be provided, and that's another $6,000 or $7,000 cost per, and I'm thinking that's about the right amount, for a water softener, the well, and everything else. The developer or builder has to pay for that, even though this water system has been paid for, the fees. Now that comes down, the fee I mentioned for 16 lots comes to six, almost $16,000 a lot. The exact figure is $15,907 per lot. And as I keep saying, for a utility that they probably will never get. They can enjoy the use of it now, but if it doesn't come within six months or within 50% buildout of the neighborhood or within complete buildout of the neighborhood, it's just money that they've given and probably will not ever be used because at that point, most developments out there would probably not opt to bring the water line into their neighborhood if they already have a water softener and a well and are happy with that. And so, and that's why this text amendment has been brought to you before several times because it seems to be an unfair burden on the landowners and the developers, and it gets passed on to the residents and the taxpayers in lot cost. If you're going to develop the land, you have to pass these fees on. And that's what I really wanted you to hear, a real number, in case in point, subdivision that's in process, that this fee affects. And it, and if, and the developers that I work for, most of them would gladly hook up to the water system if it was available. They, they're not trying to circumvent or figure out a way to outdo the system by going outside of this area. They're trying to, they would love to provide, they're certainly, water to the community they're developing, but it's just not available on these lands that they're trying to develop. I know over in, these areas are very similar to the Fruit Bowl and Gibbs Woods townships because, in essence, there's really not any water available. Over there, they say there's no water available. They require three-acre lots, and, but they don't require you to pay the water infrastructure fee, even though we don't have water to give you right now. And I don't see how these outlying areas are much different than that because water is so far away. And some of the reasoning in the, for the denial or recommendation to deny was, these outlying areas are impacting the systems harder, but there's no impact on the system if water's not there. It's not impacting the water system. It's actually benefiting it because they're getting money that will most likely never be spent towards their subdivision. So that's one reason we're asking for the text amendment. It's, it's been brought to you three or four times before because of the unfairness within it, and that the Planning Board heard that, several of them discussed it, like, is it not being quite right to charge for a fee or utility that's not going to be used or received or enjoyed? And that's why we're here tonight, and we ask for it to be approved as it's written. You know, if it's beyond the limit, don't, don't charge the fee because, even if it goes to a bond... to a bond, bonds or letters of credit are hard to get in this financial climate. Back in the day when they were a going thing, banks were giving them away and giving them away or selling them. But the banks changed hands so fast, the bonds, letters of credit expired and were never renewed and it left the county in a dilemma with those projects. And I don't know that bonds or letters of credit are a good alternative either, but, and I'll be available if you have any questions.
You want to have questions?
I just, I mean, you, you said it yourself, the cost of it's passed on to the person who's buying the lot and the house to start with.
And sometimes that makes the lot undevelopable.
You said that. So I guess the point is, do you take, do you, do you pay for it upfront or do you pay for it later on that same group of people that have not done that and not put it up front in escrow of some kind, when they come in here and they're screaming and hollering because they have poor water quality, they have no fire hydrants, they have houses burned down next door and fire department didn't have any water to do anything with and, and all those types of things, then we're, we're trying to figure out how to address those concerns, whereas as you just said, but then if, if, if there's water established in there, those same people in that neighborhood along with, because they're going to be users of the water system, are going to be paying for the infrastructure that goes in there then. So it's kind of.
It's kind of a pay me now or pay me later.
Exactly. I mean, that's kind of how, I understand, I totally understand what you're saying. God knows it, it, it hurts to, to do what we've done and thought long and hard about it, but if we're going to upgrade things at some point in time, that's what we've got to do.
I know the, the fire protection is a requirement within these neighborhoods as, in the form of a pond. So that part of the equation in these major subdivisions is, is addressed.
And they come in and they put ponds in and this and another, but as, as we talked about the last time, very labor intensive and right here to most of these fire departments and they'll tell you, the one thing they don't have is labor.
Well, I'm a volunteer farmer myself.
And the labor you're talking about is to transport the water from the pond to the actual house.
That's right.
Pumper trucks. Another thing I'd like, I guess, to comment on is the, and we talked about this before. They, you heard it earlier tonight when they said leapfrogging. In other words, it would encourage development beyond the water system because it would be cheaper for the developer, if we did this, to bypass that mile where the water system is already in and go out where it would be more financially lucrative to, to have a development. I think the cost that the planning board or that staff provided that would increase for the county was not so much the water per se, but they were talking about the services because now you have to have school buses that drive further out, you have to establish voting districts further out, you have to have sheriff's department have to be able to, so the infrastructure expense or the cost, if you will, the cost that the county would, would incur if development was encouraged beyond the mile from where the infrastructure is located, that's where the cost of the increase and so, and the services were coming from because of the need for the county to provide attendant services farther out in the county. And two, it would have an effect on the property values for those who own property within the mile because it, it could have, it could have the unintended consequence of affecting properties if developers were to say, well, we don't want to build within this area, we're going to go outside farther out where we don't have to pay the hundred and, or $254,000, we can save that right now, so we're not going to buy any land closer in, we're going to go out thereby having a disparate impact on the properties located within that one mile area. So I'm just saying, I mean, it's, 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 there's a lot of variables here.
Well, and some of those variables, one, a, a utility fee like this shouldn't be used to control development. The zoning is used to control development. In these outlying areas, the density is reduced quite a bit. In the full-service districts where water's available and sewer and other, the densities are quite a bit higher than in, on the land on these areas. So first, the land has already taken a hit by the density allowance and, and when you count rooftops is how you count the value. Out here in these areas, this is agriculture zones where the density has been set out to kind of discourage the development or, or encourage more rural setting type development and common open space type subdivisions, but that's what has been written in place to try to control or, or encourage development closer in within the full service area. But availability of the land is what dictates development too. If the developer's looking for a piece of land, if he can find it within these areas, he'll certainly invest there, but sometimes land is available on the outer side of that or family farms are trying to be sold for a value that they can get the most bang for their buck and it comes, land is an investment no matter where you buy it. And, you know, if you're, if we're going to force some kind of impact like this, own that land because it's, the county service is not available, where you have to pay for a utility and also install a water, a well and a softener, you're impacting, you know, there's an impact on that piece of land.
Yeah, and I was speaking too, if, if, when the comment about the additional cost, that's what I was addressing, but I think Commissioner Idlet hit it right on the head where I think it kind of boils down to it's a pay me now or pay me later or who's going to pay? Because potentially, maybe not in every case, but potentially someone's going to have to pay for the water hookup and will it be done after the fact, once the development is in, which is harder logistically to try to put it in? Or is it pursuant to policy PP3 the county has in the land use plan, is it placed on the developer when he goes in initially? And I think Commissioner Idlet hit it on the head when that's probably the primary concern that we have to look, you know, that we, we struggle with.
This was thought about when the equation for extension was derived. You know, it's a thousand foot for the first 10 lots, then I think 20 foot for every lot thereafter. And if that's the formula that you crunch in, if you have so many lots, it's that many, that many feet. And it's the, the ultimate, the bottom line here is, are they really paying for a utility that will never be used? Like I said, if it's, if the subdivision's developed and the people have been in their project for five years, they're happy with their wells or water softeners and their, their system, and then you come by with a water line, are you really going to be, are they really going to be wanting to hook on? I think in the notes that you received in your packet, it stated that there has, that these fees that have been paid to the county, none of them have been used yet to, in any extension forms whatsoever. Nobody has benefited so far from these fees in the areas that they were paid for. And, and I don't, in areas that are out like Backwoods Road and areas like that, it's going to be a long time unless y'all come forward with a short-term or long-term plan for that extension, if the people will ever see a water for a fee that they have to write a check for. But that's, that's why we're here tonight.
I just wanted to make a comment, listening to the, this water hookups. There's a development, a rather large development in Lower Currituck that has, had had water on each side of it. And like you were mentioning, Commissioner Griggs, is they've, they had to go in a well system, just because developer didn't put the water lines in the development. And, you know, 10 years later now, they're screaming for the water and why wasn't it put in initially? And a letter was sent out, what the cost would be if they want a water line in there now, and they're just like, well, why wasn't it done when the development was put in? And it's a large, and that, you know, it was a large amount of money and they all want, they all want city water, but they can't afford the water line now. So, I mean, that's, that's right down in grandy.
And that's going to probably be a case by case. I know.
Maybe that was an example that I think Commissioner Griggs was kind of discussing.
Eddie, and, and your example here, what, what is the zoning district that the 16 lots are in?
Agriculture.
So that's one lot per?
For three acres.
Three acres.
But they're doing a common open space subdivision where they've set aside 50 acres to accommodate the 16 one-acre lots. And there is a fire pond going in the project that will cover for fire protection.
Is there any kind of trade-off for doing that?
Well, it's a, actually now, if you're in the agriculture zone, you have to do a conservation open space subdivision. So you take, so, and that's to, to guarantee the rural countryside. You have to take the density, the density crunch of how many lots you can get on your acre, on your acreage, and then you come in and set aside 50% open space, it's a calculation that you run it out. Set aside the open space and then you put the lots on, on smaller lots. And that's what happened in this case.
Do you pick up additional lots with that?
There's no bonus.
No bonus in that?
No.
So it, it truly is no benefit to the developer by setting aside a large tract of land and doing all that?
You get the rooftops off the entire tract.
You get the same regardless.
But you condense them into a smaller area.
Right. Just on infrastructure. Then are you required?
If you set, there's certain percentages if you set aside to get you a higher density yield.
Right.
And I think it goes up, if you set aside 66%, I believe Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, my memory's not what it used to be, you get, what is it, 3.4%?
If you do, if you do 50% open space, you get 0.4 units per acre, so that's 0.4 times the whole gross acres of the tract. If you do 60% open space, it jumps up to 0.5 units per acre, and if you do 70% open space, it jumps up to 0.66.
Where I was going with this is, but in those 16 lots, you still have to put the water infrastructure in.
No, we have to pay for it. We're not allowed to install dry hyd, dry lines.
You're not?
No. We have to just pay the money. It's a ca, it's a check written to the county to hold until at such a point in time.
An engineering reason why you can't do that or?
Contamination.
Contamination.
The water lines are designed to keep contamination out with pressure. The seals and all the, the slip seals, if they lose pressure, and this is why, excuse me, if the pressure ever drops below 20 PSI, you go to a boil water standard. Firemen have to be very aware of that when they're pumping because if it drops below 20, it's a chance for impurities infiltrating into the system. So that's the main reason you cannot install a line, cap it and wait 10 years to charge it.
Till you're ready to use it.
That's right.
All right. More questions?
If I could.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell, how long before you think the debt would be paid off that you said we could look at possibly putting water lines in?
For our call, we would discuss it was probably in that 10, 10-year timeframe.
Before the debt would be paid off that we could actually go into it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And as, as we go to smaller lots, I have to worry about, like I said, the fire hydrants or the dry hydrants, whatever you call it, because I, you know, you can save one house, but if they're, the closer they get together, the more I have to worry about more people losing their homes.
Let me define smaller lots for you.
Okay.
In this soils where there's no septic or sewer available, our smaller lots are going to be acre lots. That's, which is what you see as standards, we take a three, a three, what was supposed to have been a three acre lot and put it into an acre lot. So that's the smaller lot in the ag zone in the common open space development. You can go smaller, but typically the soils will not support the septic in that area. So 40,000, 43,000 is about the smallest you'll get in these zones.
And that's a net acre, not a gross acre, correct? You're, you're talking about every house went one acre.
43,560. Actually, in conservation subdivisions, you can dictate the size of your lots.
But the ones you're talking about for yours, yours are going to be truly one acre.
That's correct. Well, they have to, yes, mine are, I think they're 40,000. I, I haven't looked back, but you have to have room for the initial septic system, 100% repair area, the dwelling and all, and most of them will be right at an acre per rooftop.
Well, I'll tell you some information I'd like to see from staff is, number one, I'd like to know how many subdivisions we're holding money on and how much per subdivision and how long it's been held. Is that?
Yeah, I believe there, there's three subdivisions, I believe, but I would like to confirm that before making that my final answer.
There's three that are beyond the?
Yeah, three that have been built beyond the formula distance that we're actively holding money for.
Okay.
I, I, I want to confirm that, but I, but it's not, it's, it's going to be right in that area, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Again, I know we struggled hard with this thing, good lord, for some time, and I think, Eddie, I think you provided input to Ben, I assume. I, I know there was a whole lot of talking.
Sure. Yeah, I was there.
And, and have we got it right? I don't know that we've got it right. And I certainly am willing to listen. I don't, I don't necessarily agree that what you're saying is the right way. Maybe there's some, I don't know, maybe some other ways to skin the cat. I don't know. I just, I feel strongly about the, the future water system situation. I feel strongly about that. I feel, you know my feelings, I feel strongly about the, the fire protection end of it. And, and I don't know, maybe there's other things that we, we, I don't, you know, I'll look to my colleagues up here, I, I don't know. I know I put a lot of struggling thoughts in it myself when we were talking about it and I think all of us did.
Well, we have a couple of other people that have signed up to speak. If anybody has any other questions for Eddie.
I'd like to just make one more statement.
Yes, sir.
The gist of this request is, we're okay to pay the fee if we can get the service, but we really think it's unfair to charge a fee of this nature, $16,000 a lot, if no service is ever going to be provided. And that's basically the, the gist of all of this. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say I agree with Eddie. If, 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 if there, if, if there was no way they were going to get the water service, I totally agree with him 100%. My, my goal is to take that service out there. I don't know, I mean, this is way past my bid time, it'll be, I'm sure, so, but I would love to see the water system go out and service our citizens in this county. And that, that's, that's kind of how I was looking at it from that perspective.
All right. Next, we have Mr. James Ennis. As you speak, I ask you to restate your name and address for the record.
James Ennis, 1219 Tulsa Creek Road, Moyacan. Mr. Idlet, I've been pondering your question, so I think it's a good one, and that is, who's going to pay twice? Rest assured that the developer's actually paying twice upfront. The developer not only has to pay for the installation of the well for the customer, for the ultimate purchaser of the house, but also, as Mr. Hyman has pointed out, make the deposit. So there is actually a payment twice under the current development ordinance. And like you said, that's, that's not fair. It doesn't seem to be fair that we should pay twice, but that's currently what the ordinance requires. Now, the option of providing a letter of credit or bond, Mr. Hyman's absolutely correct. When things were hopping in the economy, a letter of credit or bond was readily available. I can tell you from personal experience, they're trying to get a bond for this very type of scenario. We exhausted every insurance agent that I could find that even had the ability to provide such a bond. And the response always was from the underwriter, how long are we going to be on the hook for it, for the possible installation of these utilities? And the response was forever. The response from the underwriting of the insuring companies was, we can't provide such a product. Where, where are you and why, why are you being required to do that? We can't provide a bond that may never come due because it has to have a lifetime. If you're going to have to do it within 10 years, we'll guarantee for 10 years, but for an indefinite period of time, we can't provide that product. As far as a letter of credit is concerned, a letter of credit is not just a simple thing to get from any bank. In order to get a letter of credit, you must apply for whatever the face amount of that credit is to the bank in the form of a loan and the bank must qualify you for that particular loan. It's an outstanding, think of it like a credit line. It's available to you, you're just not cashing in or drawing on it yet. Are those things readily available today? No, they're not. So while the state may compel all the counties to revise their ordinance to make the alternatives of letter of credit or bond in lieu of a cash deposit, that may not be a realistic option for anyone really, because they're just simply not realistically available today. As far as the fire protection goes, the current ordinance really promotes growth where there is going to be, of course, water lines in that developers can get smaller lots. And we saw in Moyacan off Shingle Landing Road whereby that developer, I think he's installing about 90 homes or so in a space of, is it less than 50 acres, I think? So in that situation, or something close to that, Mr. Woody, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's something along those lines. So in that instance, we've got two homes per acre. So in that instance, we've got two homes per acre, assuming you spread them out evenly. But accommodate open space, the houses become even closer together. So to your point, Mr. Hall, if we're going to promote subdivisions where there's going to be closer homes, then we ought to have some sort of fire protection. But in those areas where we're outside where the current water, water line serves, where that main extends, we already have a three acre lot size minimum in agricultural zone. If you seek to develop it and take advantage of some of the, for example, the conservation subdivision, yes, you can shrink the size of the lots, but the homes are still on an acre and thus much further apart. And the reason we have fire ponds, by the way, is because Mr. Mims, the fire marshal, suggested that years ago as a solution to providing a source of water for fire. The other thing is, do we have the option to buy land that's where there's currently a water main? That's not always the case. And a lot of times developers are going to look for land outside where that is. And it's not to avoid the expense. In fact, a developer has the incentive to develop land where the water line already is because they won't have to pay twice. So actually, it's a, it's, it's not an incentive to look outside or leapfrog, as has been suggested repeatedly. That's simply not the case. Furthermore, if you are a landowner, if you all own land outside what the water line currently is, you've inherited the land or your family member has it, and you're seeking to either sell it or pass it down to your children in the future. Let's say you own this fifty acres. The value of your land today and for the foreseeable future, with the ordinance currently in place, is significantly less than if that fifty acres was close enough to the water line such that it was feasible or practical to connect. Why? Because the developer looking at your fifty acres sitting far from the water main has to realize and will very quickly that he is going to have to deposit what we're talking about tonight. In other words, pay twice. So you actually create a disincentive for the developer to develop out there. Now, is the developer still going to pay you the same amount of money for that tract of land had you been close enough to the water main? Absolutely not. Doesn't make any sense to. He has got to provide a product, a home that is competitively priced. That same three bedroom home outside the water line is not go, is in order to compete with a home that's built and connected to the water line, it's going to have to be built for a similar price, is it not? Otherwise, he's not going to sell the home. He has to save the money somewhere and he's going to have to do it by reducing what he offers that person for the land. So your land that lies outside where the water main is actually is worth significantly less. So the ordinance actually has multiple indirect consequences, that being one of them, as well as the fact that developer has to pay twice. Do you have a question with me, Mr. Idlet? I'll stop if you want to ask.
In a minute, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think I'm finished. I don't want to make you wait while I review my notes.
I'm just, I'm not going. I mean, I just, I just wanted to, to raise with you, I mean, the, the, the subdivisions that now are being built to where infrastructure is being put in.
Yes.
I would submit to you, that cost is already there. Because that developers have to pay to put those mains and water lines and, and everything in that subdivision there. So the inherent cost of him to put his project together is costing him more than it would on the pieces out here that he don't have to put that in. So the difference is already there. Only thing that you're doing, and, and you said it as well, the cost of doing business is passed along to the consumer. All you're doing is collecting that money upfront from the consumer instead of ten years down the road when the, 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 the water hopefully does become available. And then they're screaming and hollering about, well, who's going to pay to put water in here? We don't have the money to do it. Why didn't, why was it not done before now? And, and how come there was not a bond? And lord, we hear that about roads, dirt roads and everything in the world is always, how come something like that wasn't fixed before now? And so that, you know, that's, that would be all I have to say. And I, but I understand what you're saying. Don't, please don't think that I don't, I do.
No, I think you do. But respectfully, I, I've got to point out, I think, a, a small fallacy in that analysis. And that is, you're assuming that passing on the cost is a realistic option. Take it out of context for a moment. If, if you and I own, you and I own car dealerships and for whatever reason, your car dealership, you have to incur more costs to market that same car. And your car costs a thousand bucks more than mine. Are you going to sell any cars? No. Everybody's going to come see me because I can sell the same product more cheaply. So I'm, I'm afraid I, I don't agree to you with you to that extent in that we can simply pass on the buck. It's not going to happen because the ultimate end user, the consumer, the purchaser of the home, gets to decide where he or she buys the home. They can buy the same home out there and pay more for it because a developer had to pay more in order to make the cash deposit for his bond. Or they can purchase a similar home in town where that developer did not.
So addressing, addressing one of the comments you made relative to not encouraging leapfrog, leapfrogging, it seems to me you just made the case for leapfrogging. For example, in Mr. Idlet's case, there's a developer that has to build a house and has to build the infrastructure in order to be able to hook up to the water system as the county has it. You're just outside of that zone. Therefore, his house has to comply with all of the, the county's requirements in order to be able, and the funding and the infrastructure necessary to hook up. Yours doesn't have to offer that. Therefore, again, the same homes, right? Who, who's going to buy in the subdivision that has the infrastructure when they can save money and buy, just like you, the case you just made? I can buy outside of that zone, but because you didn't have to pay for, and I didn't mean specifically you, but in general, but because you didn't have to build out the infrastructure necessary to maybe hook up to the water system, you're a better deal. So in fact, exactly what we're concerned about occurs. It is more preferable, it is cheaper to buy, you know, identical homes outside of where we're trying to see the growth with the infrastructure that's being built with the water system. So, and again, ju, just like, if we're not going to build a water system, I think it's unreasonable to expect developers to pay into that. That is an unreasonable expectation. And, you know, holding it ad finitem, you know, until one day maybe we get around to it, I, I, I've got an issue with that as well. But I, I have been around construction for a long time, up in Hampton Roads and down in here. And there's nothing worse than knocking on a homeowner's door and saying, we just put in a water line. Oh, by the way, you now owe us, insert the blank amount of money to hook up. It is detestable to the homeowner. It's, it's just, it's not a pleasant event. And, and we have got, you know, the county's moving forward. We have got to look after the best interests of the county and its residents as a whole. But we clearly understand, we clearly understand.
And with, and with that, I know you want to make a quick point, but we need to move on.
So go ahead. Let me respond to rebuttal, two things quickly. One, you're assuming that the developer has water for free. If the developer's not close enough to the water main to connect, he still has to provide the purchaser of the home with a water source. He still had to pay for a six thousand dollar well. So he didn't get away free. He didn't have a lesser cost of development. If I connect to the water line, I pay to connect to the water line, the water tap fee at the time. I only have to pay the tap fee. If I'm outside the zone, I pay for the installation of the well. I pay a cash deposit for the potential installation of the water lines in the future, and I pay a cash deposit. So there actually is indeed quite a difference in significant cost and greater cost to develop outside. And as far as providing service, as Eddie said, developers are happy to connect to the water. Please extend the water line. They really like to connect. There's no incentive not to because by connecting, they're providing a reliable, good, quality source of water to the customer. And truthfully, the builder would much rather do that because that's one less potential headache for him or her in the future as far as complaints. So yes, please connect. But if, if the water line is not financially feasible for something to be extended right now, then let's come up with a plan whereby, okay, well, in a few years' time, we will be at this particular location. And that makes sense if we follow that. But currently, there is no plan in place. So if there's no plan in place, then you are having to hold, you are holding people's money indefinitely in perpetuity. And that, I submit to you, is, is unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Mr. Billy Bromsey?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Billy Bromsey. My address is Currituck, North Carolina. And I will not rehash what Mr. Hyman and Mr. Ennis have already talked about. I will point out, I've got a thirteen lot subdivision I was trying to get approved. The cost to me upfront for the water issue is two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars upfront out of my pocket.
How many lots?
Thirteen, thirteen lots. And I, I think we're dreaming. If we think that I can go get an irrevocable letter of credit for an open-ended obligation that may never terminate. Nor could I get a bond to cover that because the, people won't take that risk. They don't know where I'll be by the time you all get around to, to demanding payment. Could be twenty years from now. I'll be ninety-four. And it just seems to me that to exact two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from me upfront is punitive. I can't see how it's any different on North Currituck Road than Knott's Island, Lower Currituck, Gibbs Woods, it's the same deal. There's no water there. They are not faced with the same obligation. Why impose it upon those of us who happen to be near a water line? And to ask you a question about, about Mr. Payment, about the people who, who were in a subdivision where there were no water lines? Well, it seems to me that those water lines weren't there when they bought the lot. They knew the water lines were not there and they knew what they were getting. What can their gripe be? That somebody is supposed to come in after the fact, after they've already purchased the lots? And say, well, we're sorry, we're going to put the water lines in now? I have a hard time with that. And the same thing with the fire hydrant. If somebody wants to be in a place with fire protection, they certainly have a right to go buy a, a, a lot or a house in an area that ha, that's on water lines. But nobody's trying to hide the fact from anybody that there's no water li, water available where they are purchasing their lot. And if the water quality is not good, it's not good. I grew up on water quality, I guess it wasn't too good. But that was my choice. That's where I wanted to live. I could have moved to the city. I'm opening myself up now for any questions anybody has. I think I've got a ready response. Anybody have any questions?
I think you've made a lot of sense.
All right. Thank you, folks.
All right. That's all I.
You know, the county is, is elected to get in, in the water business. And, and certainly, I can make an argument that there's some obligation on the part of the county to run the lines to the residents who, who want the water. Anybody give that any thought?
Certainly, and I thought that's what, I thought what we were talking about is the infrastructure within the subdivisions.
Well, I mean, one of the questions you have, if it's the county's responsibility to run the water, then you're looking at some people, let's say for instance, me, I, I'm on well water too. I grew up, I grew up on well water. But if the county is burdened with the responsibility to building out to wherever people want water, the question I think more properly is, who pays for that service? And we have, as was, was Ben talked about before, we have a land use policy that says that we have that it should be on the user. If the county assumes and, and takes the mantle of responsibility for building out everywhere, the reality of it is somebody's going to pay. And who is the somebody? And then I can see this room full of people going, I paid, already paid for mine. Why are you taxing me to pay for land twenty miles from me? It's not fair to tax me for something I'm not getting and I've already paid. So I think that could be, could be.
I'll give you an analogy of that. My children have grown. My children have already been through the Currituck County Schools. Maybe someone else's children are not. Couldn't I make the same argument? Why should I be taxed to support the school system? When my children are not using the schools and somebody else's are?
That question has to be asked.
I'll give you an example with the ferry. I have, ferry's been here fifty-three years, or fifty-two years, something like that. I've probably gone across the ferry half a dozen times, but some people use it every single day. But I'm not complaining about the tax I have to pay to support the ferry or any other endeavors like that. Isn't that kind of what the deal is when you live in a democracy? That we, none of us ever are going to be able to get a return, dollar for dollar, on what we put in. We're going to spend some dollars to help our fellow men. Some of our fellow men will spend dollars to help us. The county elected to get into the water business, not me. And I, I, I see a duty on the part, part of the county to provide water. And that wa, that wa, that was at its inception, at its inception. That was the deal. The county was going to provide water. You can sign up for the water if you want to have water, but you're not going to be compelled to hook up to the water. But that's changed over time and I understand that. Any other questions?
No, no questions, just a, just a comment. You, you talking it was going to cost you two hundred and how many thousand?
Two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, I think.
And for fourteen, thirteen lots?
Huh?
For thirteen lots?
Thirteen lots.
So does that fit out about the same average as what the gentleman was talking about?
I haven't compared it to his averages.
Probably, no, that's about twenty dollars, about twenty thousand. But the point is, when you sell those lots to that person who buys that lot, that cost is going to be passed along to him. You're not going to sell it at a loss. So.
But I'm not worried about too much about twenty years from now. I'm worried about when somebody calls me to fork up the two hundred and twenty thousand bucks now. That's what, and you can say pass it along, that's easier said than done.
But in the cost of you doing business with the people you're selling that lot to, your lot would go up that twenty thousand dollars, that he would pay that, so you would recoup your twenty thou, your, your two hundred thousand dollars when you sold the lot? Is that not correct?
You mean, if I pay two, if I pay two hundred thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars per lot into the county and they're holding my money and they're not doing anything to that lot at all, that I can immediately go out and charge twenty thousand dollars more to a customer who comes along? I mean, I don't, I don't believe that will be the case. Now, I could be wrong. I'm not always right, but I don't think that is the case.
That's kind of how I had, and again, that's how I had looked at it. When you sold that lot, you were passing along the cost of doing business for that future system when you sold the lot, to recoup your cost of what it had cost you to do that development. And that would include the money that you had put up or the letter of credit or whatever the case may be.
I mean, you may, you may look at it that way, but I don't believe that's the case. And I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong, but I, I just, I just don't think that's the way it works.
Well, I think the, the issue is, is we'll, we'll just say twenty thousand per lot. It may take him fifteen, twenty years to sell to thirteen lots. He may not even live long enough to recoup his two hundred thousand. I'm not, not putting a word on you, but he may not live. But he may not live that additional twenty years that it would take to recoup that money back. So he may actually never even net a profit out of that subdivision because he has to pay that money upfront, is that what you're?
That, that's what I'm saying, but in addition to that, you got the land cost, that's famous behind him. He's not cheap.
And where you got the, the infrastructure of building roads and everything else goes to the lot cost as well.
I mean, there are other costs.
Right.
And it, and it.
Site evaluations, maybe twenty years before you even apply for a septic tank. Have to get that one's not good, but for twelve months. That's for another day.
I understand what you're saying.
Any more questions?
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Bromsey.
Thank you, everybody.
Is there anyone else that didn't sign up on this issue that wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the board what their pleasure is.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table this. We already at the inception was told by, uh, Mr. Woody that we would have to address this ordinance relative to the General Assembly's recent change in the potential financing of this. So in light of that and the other questions that had been proffered tonight from the audience, I'd make a motion that we table this for further consideration. Now, if the board wants to, upon seconding this, if they do so, I'm being presumptuous, if they wanna put a time limit in it or any further dire, uh, directions, that'll be fine.
I would, I, do we have a second?
I will second that with the, with the stipulation that we give the, um, Planning Board time to, or staff to, to come up with some recommendations.
I think we need to ask them how long it would take them to go through this and bring something back.
Well, I think the first thing to do is, we need to, somebody needs to set some parameters of exactly what we're, what we're, what we're gonna do before we go tasking the, the Planning Board to, I mean, not the Planning Board, but the Planning Staff, excuse me.
I think what you're asking them to do is bring back some recommendations of alternate solutions incorporating what the state has mandated. Is that not what you're asking for?
Well, what the state is mandating, and I think his motion was also with the questions that have come up tonight. Was that not right, Mr.?
Yeah, I mean, there was some discussion, I think Commissioner Bubba brought up, about the imperperity and the unfairness of that. I think the Planning Board upon submission of this matter for us tonight had put in a recommendation for a ten-year. So I mean, that would be in light of some of the issues that maybe could be further discussed or brought to us some options, viable options.
Mr. Chairman, if you are looking for a recommendation from the staff and including the Planning Board, then I would recommend that we would need ninety days, if not, we, if not sooner, we would need ninety days to, for staff to deliberate, to meet with the, the interested parties, and to have something gone to the Planning Board and back in front of you. If you want something from the staff, we could talk about, um, probably cutting that time in half.
I think if, if the staff is gonna hold fast with holding the money in perpetuity, I think the staff owes the public a timeline when they plan on extending water to these areas that we're holding money for. Or if we're not gonna be able to extend water within a reasonable amount of time, then I think, I think there's some valid arguments have been made tonight concerning holding the money in perpetuity. I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm never gonna be in a position where I can develop something, but having to stroke a check for two hundred thousand dollars before you even, on, on thirteen or sixteen lots, before you even get started, seems something I would, uh, certainly have an issue with.
I, I, I think if, if, if you remember when we debated this thing the last time, uh, I, I believe at that point in time, there was a suggestion then that we start taking a look and putting together a long-range plan for water system in the county. Evidently, that we, we, it fell through the cracks, obviously, and I agree with you. I totally agree. If, if there's no plan to do something with the water, well, then we should not take people's money. But if there is a plan, well, then, you know, we, we, we need to look at it and plan for the future, that's, that's my comment.
And I think the, the, uh, speakers tonight have said that they wanna see a plan. They would love to hook into the county water if you're gonna have it. But if you're not, I think they have a valid, a valid argument for discussion, and the board needs to, to look at it.
I, I, I think too, Mr. Bromsey brought up the, uh, the comment, and probably properly so, about the, uh, don't hold me this, I'm not so much, I guess, the obligation, but would the county should, if we're gonna have a water system, offer it to the whole county. I think what would help this board in its deliberation pursuant to those, all these variables that we've heard tonight, is to get an estimate. It's twenty dollars a foot, if I remember reading the packet, I saw somewhere in there, it's twenty dollars a linear foot. I could be wrong on that.
Forty dollars a foot, so it's coming from the water department.
Is that forty?
Eighty.
Okay, that's forty dollars a foot.
Or eight inch.
For, for, well, that's, I think, what the ordinance has.
Required eight inch now.
I suspect if we get an estimate from staff as to what it would take to provide water to the entirety of the county that now exists and have houses, it might be quite shocking. So I, I think maybe we, and I don't know if.
We, we have that figure, and it is shocking.
Oh, do, do you have an idea? This is just to put in context, Mr., and, and Mr. Bromsey brought up a good point. But we have to juxtapose it with who's gonna pay for it, and what would the potential obligation be to the taxpayers of Currituck County for a build-out pursuant to, to that suggestion?
We are talking about the, the mainland Currituck, one of the points that was brought up is, is Gibbs Woods and Knott's Island, where there's absolutely no plan to bring municipal water to Gibbs Woods and Knott's Island. So, so they're, they're outside of this conversation. Um, we have priced what it would take to, to completely build out the system on the mainland, and I don't have the exact, uh, number, but it's tens of millions.
Tens of millions.
Yes, sir.
Well, we have a motion in a second, and we have a proposal that's before us tonight. I think we're getting on a side issue of build-out for the county and so forth. I would like to see us address these areas that have, I certainly wanna see the build-out for the county or whatever. But before us tonight, we have property owners that have come with some specific areas that they've asked us to look at and a specific proposal. Now, we have a motion from Commissioner Griggs, could you restate it?
You're testing me. Uh, I think, uh, my motion was to table this. And till such time, we already know that the state, in lieu of their recent General Assembly action, has mandated that we're gonna have to have a change. We already know that in lieu of, we've, we've got a cash requirement. Now, they're saying that it can be, uh, contingent upon what the developer wants to do in lieu of the other two financial vehicles. Said we needed to table it for that, and I think we discussed if we wanted to add any additional parameters besides the change we have to do mandated by the General Assembly. And I think we've discussed such, some of those.
So, okay, we have a motion.
And I will second that motion.
We have some more discussion. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I, I, I will hope that part of what we're doing is addressing what's been brought to us tonight, those areas outside the service area.
Well, if we can, if we can put a long-range plan together and identify where the water needs are, then it will make it so much simpler to, to figure out what a plan could be.
Yes. All right, next item, consideration and approval of bid rejection and direction to rebid the Corolla Greenway construction project. Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, uh, the, the project in Corolla, it's about a three-mile-long, it's the Corolla Greenway, it's the multi-use path in Corolla. Uh, this project was placed out for bids. Uh, when it went out for bids, we had six contractors that expressed an interest. At the bid opening, unfortunately, one of them went to the wrong location, so we ended up with five submitted bids. Uh, the apparent low bidder did not have what staff believed to be the proper licensing for the project, so we moved to the apparent second low bidder. The apparent third low bidder has challenged the second low bidder's bid as being non-responsive. And because time is of the essence for this project, we, we do wanna see this project done before the start of next tourism season, and so that we do not get caught in what could be weeks, if not months, of challenges amongst the different contractors. Staff believe that in order to keep this project on schedule, that it was in the best interest to, to go ahead and reject all bids and place this project back out for bids. So, being since it is a formal bidding responsibility because of the dollar amount of the project, uh, it does require us to bring this recommendation to this board, um, and it does require a, a formal action by this board of commissioners to reject all bids. Um, we do believe, uh, if we rebid the project now, that we will be in a position to bring you back, uh, a bid recommendation at your next meeting at December seventh, and stay on the schedule that, uh, we had proposed for having this project constructed and completed before the next tourism season. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions the board might have.
Yeah, I've got one. Um, so what you're saying is, all the bids that you received, none of them were responsive? Or were there, so you had no responsive bids?
I can't speak to bid number four and five, we didn't get that far to evaluate. We are evaluating bids number two and three. The staff's position was that, uh, bid number two was responsive, but it did have a, a piece of paper that was not included in, in the response. And the staff has taken the position that, uh, it was an immaterial deficiency, and we have the ability to over, um, to, to waive those. It did not give a competitive advantage to the, the apparent second low bidder. But the third low bidder is challenging that position. And because of that, and the process that we would have to go through, uh, to work through that challenge, it could end up adding a significant amount of time to the project just getting to the point of trying to determine who the low bidder was. And so, we feel like, and, and, and because the project, time is of the essence, uh, again, we feel like in order to put together a, a reasonable schedule to get this completed, uh, that the best course of action was actually to reject all the bids.
Yes, sir.
I'll ask, Mr. McCree, are we on good legal ground?
Yes, certainly, the best, the best, uh, ground you can be on is to reject bids and do them again.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Will this give a significant advantage to, I guess, low bidder number three over low bidder two in the future? When you rebids?
No, sir, I mean, I, I, I think they, I mean, the bids were open, so the, at, at least the five that submitted, um, their, their numbers are, are known. Um, in fact, what we're hearing from, uh, several of the bidders, this has a chance of actually bringing in lower bids by going around the second time.
I'm gonna tell you that, um, the fact that we're doing it this way, uh, as a, a contractor that plays in similar, uh, venues, that I think that by rejecting this and starting over, we've actually increased the likelihood of a challenge. I, I think you're saying responsive, and I'm not sure that's, that, I think you're referring to compliant.
You, you always have the ability under North Carolina law, even if you have resp, what may be on their face responsive and responsible bids to reject at any time, it's in the discretion of this board, and there can be no challenge to you rejecting all bids.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, I guess.
I have a motion for approval, second, any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, next item is consideration and approval of master fee schedule. I believe, uh, Mr. Hall wanted to discuss a couple of these, so, Mr. Scanlon, would you be prepared to discuss?
Um, I, I certainly will do my best. What, uh, what we're actually bringing to you tonight, um, uh, the board, as part of your budgetary process, adopts all the fees that the county cha, uh, assesses. Being since last year, at, at budget time, the county was not, there, there's two departments that are actually bringing fees to you that we're asking to amend the fee schedule for. When this fee schedule was adopted July first, two thousand and fifteen, uh, the county was not adopting animals or handling the operations of the animal shelter, and therefore, we did not have fees on our fee schedule associated with, um, that operation. Um, so you, you see in your agenda package, that area is highlighted in yellow. Um, it has on here, uh, what the staff would like to charge fee structure for handling animals at the shelter. I will bring to your attention that the staff is asking for some flexibility that when a, an adopt-a-thon or special event is handled, we, we are trying to encourage the adoption of animals, that the staff have some leeway under those special events where, uh, those fees can be reduced, uh, up to possibly, uh, a fifty percent reduction in those fees. The, the second piece is also highlighted, and it comes from the Tourism Department. And we are looking to do basically two different things. Um, in the retail shop, in the Tourism Department, we have historically been selling merchandise that, um, had a, a lower dollar cost to it. And the board had a policy, uh, previously, that we had to have, uh, um, our sale price was cost plus a hundred percent markup. So when we started buying items that were twenty, forty, and fifty dollars, at cost plus a hundred percent markup, it would certainly price them beyond what a re, a reasonable retail, uh, price would be for that item. So what we're asking in, in the top four line items is to bring a graduated scale that will talk to how we will price items that are sold, cost plus, um, at the scale, starting with anything less than seven dollars, uh, at a hundred percent, cost plus a hundred percent, all the way up to items twenty dollars or more being cost plus twenty-five percent. You also see there, we have three other charges. Uh, this is an item that had been discussed before with the Whalehead Trust. Uh, we, over the years, there have been vendors that have approached the county that have had an interest in providing services or, or doing businesses, uh, business on Whalehead property grounds. And so this will create a fee structure that we can contract under some kind of a concession, uh, a license agreement, uh, where, let's say, uh, a business wanted to come and launch kayaks, or if they wanna do segue tours, or they wanna do some for-profit business on the county park, that we have a fee structure that, number one, allows that, uh, but also, uh, a fee structure that we can contract for that service with that particular vendor. Uh, and with that, I'll be happy to answer questions on either one of these proposals.
All right, questions for the manager?
I just, uh, keep hearing about some of the concessions at the airport or something. I've, I, and again, nobody has made any specific sum, or they seem to be unfair or something. I mean, is, is, has there been any adjustments made to?
No, sir.
Have you heard?
I, I have not heard that kind of, uh, uh, a, a comment being raised, but, uh, the fees you see at the very beginning under the airport, those fees have been in place, uh, for, for several years now.
Mrs. Gilbert, have, have you heard?
Um, I was on the Airport Advisory Board at that time when these fees were set up, and the only, um, issues were, um, we were charging the hang gliding operations a significant amount more than were the other concessionaires. Um, and that, that was probably the only thing that, um, that was on a negative side. The, raising the, um, hanger fees, that was another issue. But, um, we worked through them and made concessions as far as, um, to our, to our renters. But the only, the only negativity, the only really, um, issues that I recall were, um, we were charging more to the hang gliding operations than we were the other concessionaires. Um, you know, we've got some, some profitable businesses at the airport, like lessons and, and that type of thing. Um, we were weren't charging, I think, seventy-five dollars a year. Where we were hang, charging the hang gliding, uh, seven thousand a year. So that's the only issues that I've had and, and have heard. Um, I haven't heard anything in probably over a year about the airport concessions.
Just regarding I brought it up.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Yes, in reference to the annual fees, what are they in comparison to the previous, the SPCA or the nonprofits when it comes to adoption fees? I know there's a discount thing.
They are the same. They are the same.
They are the same. Okay, and then coming down, the same thing for the reclaim fees, they're the same?
That I don't know. I'd have to get that clarified, whether they are the same or not. I know the adoption fees were the same.
And then at the end, the rabies shot at county-sponsored rabies clinics, aren't they zero right now?
Yes, sir, they are.
And we're going to $10?
Yes, sir.
Do you feel that at any point that may have people not vaccinate their animals?
No, sir. In fact, what I believe I was told from the staff that had the last clinic, most people are anticipating needing to pay something, and either made donations or anticipated that there was some cost associated with it. I also believe that this helps us in applying for state funds to get the reimbursement on the program.
And then last but not least, on the solar farm, or the solar panel, shall I say, I noticed that thing there where it says it's...find it on here again, I lost it. There was 20 cents per panel, I think, and then it was a $200 base fee. Let me see if I can find it. I had it right here, and I moved it. Here, the solar array, $20 base plus 20 cents per panel, and that is for residential, and for commercial, it says no fee? Or is that for...in other words, what I'm...I guess I'm looking at, if I have my home, and I want to put solar panels up, it's going to cost me $200 plus 20 cent a panel, and if I have a solar farm that's coming in commercially, are we inspecting those the same way in cost? It would be about 10 mark, 10 down from the rabies shot, keep coming down where it says roofing, and you're at solar array on that same page.
Just above miscellaneous.
Okay. And again, I see...and your question again, I'm sorry.
Right, I see where it says that's residential, $200 for a base, and then 20 cents per panel. For a commercial, I see nothing there, or it's no fee. I mean, if I do a...if my house is not the same as a commercial solar farm that we're doing, since that's becoming a big issue, are we charging the same thing for both, or are we just charging residential?
You're losing me...okay, residential, commercial, okay, I'm sorry.
At the top where it says, it breaks it into residential, commercial.
I'll have to...we're not proposing...that is the fee that's been in place, and we're not proposing changes.
But that is...that's not an increase.
Yeah, we did, and the budget, the inspections department requested, I don't know, a fee of $200 plus $20 per panel, but that was for all solar arrays. So we're charging that fee based on residential, commercial, whatever it is.
Okay, so we are charging commercial, because that isn't...
We are. So for example, the...I haven't seen the final schedule, but for the solar array on NC-34, we did charge that fee of $200 plus 20 cents per panel.
20 cent or $20?
20 cents per panel.
Okay.
And the fee's based on the cost of the department in terms of inspection, so we did calculate that out for that number.
But I certainly see...I mean, I see your question in the presentation, if that's...from hearing is that supposed to be for residential and commercial, and so it needs to...
That's what I wanted to make sure, because if I...I want to make sure we're charging something, apples to apples.
Those fees have been in place, so the only ones we're actually proposing tonight, or any modification of the ones that were highlighted for animal control.
I saw that, and that was a question I had to ask.
Yes, sir.
Well, I have no problem with any of the things, except, again, I come back to that, $10 for the rabies shots. I've seen the people out of it. I would be against that part, otherwise I can see no other problems with anything in either there or in Whalehead. I think they're good. I just...I'm against their shoot...charging for rabies shots.
Is there any other question?
What's a rabies shot cost to go to the vet? I mean, I don't know. I take mine to the vet.
Costs me 65 bucks.
How much?
$65.
I think I might have some information on rabies shot, if you don't mind, if nobody minds. I think the clinics are still planned to be free, but anybody can walk into the shelter at any time and ask for rabies shot, and I believe that it's a $10 fee to walk in.
Okay.
But the clinics, they are required, I believe, to have free rabies clinics at least once a year.
Okay, that's...
To get funding, but I think that's for the walk-in costs.
Then that answers my questions. I would not be opposed to...it is at that point.
And I certainly can verify that for you.
And any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second, Pat.
Have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is Ms. Gilbert, board appointment for tourism.
I'd like to reappoint Janet Farr.
Janice Farr.
Janice Farr, yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. And Library Board and Game Commission, we can move to next agenda. Next item is consent agenda.
I have one for the tourism boards.
Oh, I didn't see yours, I'm sorry.
And I'd like to reappoint Mike Martine. I've had a discussion with him, and I think he'd be a good fit, and continue on with the tourism board.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. All right, next item is consent agenda. I move for approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is Commissioner's report. Mr. Beaumont?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Hall?
I have several things. First of all, this Saturday, November 21st, from 10 until 2, the Senior Center in Barco will be holding an annual craft fair. Mission is free. Give you an idea, last year, they had 31 vendors and over 45 tables of crafts. They are sold out. It is going to be packed for things that you can look at and buy. That's 100% increase over vendors from last year. The proceeds from all table rentals will be going to the Backpack for Kids program. They'll also be selling hot dogs, drinks, and chips. So this Saturday, November 21st, 10 to 2, at the Senior Center in Barco. And the second thing, September 8th, we had a meeting. In that, we decided to take from the nonprofits and put the animal shelter with the county. They passed seven to nothing. I made the motion, and I made the motion because at the time, I was in the minority of trying to keep it with the nonprofits. I believe the nonprofits did a good job. There are inherited risks and problems, but I think they did a very good job with the animals, and I think they could do it better than the county. But again, based on information that I received from the county, based on budget and price, and the fact that it would be partnership with the nonprofits, I went ahead with it. After the motion passed seven to nothing again, I asked the county manager, county attorney, how long would it take for the advisory board to be put into place? Basically, I was told two to four weeks, roughly. Well, about a month later, I asked how it was coming, and I was told that we've shelved it. We're not going to take and work on it until after we get into the shelter. At that point, I asked how did that happen, and it was a majority of the commissioners had decided to hold it. I wasn't one of those that was consulted. Well, November 1st comes, the county takes over the shelter in the old building. We're there, we're trying to work through the transition. There are glitches like anything when you have it. Facebook has things on it about being heartworms, 50% of the dogs, aggression problems in the shelter. We can't get anybody to come in here and help us. Then on November 5th, our media sends out a release asking for volunteers. November 9th, an article in the Daily Advance says we need more volunteers, more staff, and the nonprofits are not offering to help. Well, I found after talking to the nonprofits that not to be the case. I think there are growing pains. I think there are misleading statements that are being made. We do need the volunteers. We do need the nonprofits. To take and say that they aren't needed or they aren't volunteering is a mistake. I've had people that have come up to me, and while I'm eating my dinner in a restaurant, I have people that have called me on the phone, and I've had people that have sent me emails, very few emails, most of it, like I say, the phone and in person. And in that, they tried to volunteer, and they were told, right now, we're too busy, or hey, just go on back there and pick out a dog, things of that nature. How much can I verify? I decided on November 11th to go to the shelter. I found the animals to be clean, in good spirits. I felt the staff was very friendly, very inviting. Again, I have two sides of the coin, and I have to look at and say, hey, what's going on here? Maybe we weren't ready to take over the shelter. Maybe we needed more time to get ourselves together and get the advisory board in place. So we could resolve this. Things that have happened since then, let's see, Bark in the Park, that's an animal event that we have. We did a great job with it. The county was invited to participate. Both nonprofits were invited to participate. I think it went off well. This past Saturday, we had a big adopt-a-thon at PetSmart. The county declined to participate. Now, November, December, I think are the best months, without a doubt, to adopt animals, and not to participate or send dogs or cats with the nonprofit groups when it doesn't cost anything for the county was a mistake. Again, I think it's probably because it's growing pains. We're trying to take and get out there and get everything ready. Maybe it was too soon to take it over. We should have stayed where we were learning and working within it. Problem that I come back to is then, the people that are running it used to work for the SPCA. We can't get nonprofits, we can't get volunteers. Well, they knew who the volunteers were when they had it. So what happened? You forgot what the list looked like? You forgot who you could call and say, hey, Mike, come on out here and walk a dog? I have a problem with that. I can say this, there will be no additional funding that I'll approve, other than what has been approved for staff or personnel, other than what has been approved that I won't approve. Now, I can't speak for the other commissioners. They'll have to speak for themselves. I think the county can do a good job, but I think we've dropped the ball. I think we dropped the ball also the fact that, for some reason, we decided to hold off in bringing the advisory board online, and it was done wrong. Again, what's done here, and then all of a sudden, I find out a month later that it was stopped. I have a problem with that. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Griggs?
I had the opportunity, excuse me, I think it was last Monday night, to go with my wife to a continuing education course put on by East Carolina School of Medicine, Brady, I believe, Brady Medical School. And it's subject matter was, and I may not use the proper terms, but it was a cancer screening, and it was specifically talking about lung cancer. And a couple of points that I was able to assimilate is that lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths among smokers, but it's the sixth largest cause of death among There is, and I would suggest anyone out there the age of 55 or older, when they go to their physician, speak to them, because I think there's funding now in place, or there is Medicare approval for screening. And another thing that came out is that northeastern North Carolina seems to have more than its share of incidences of cancer. And there were three thoracic surgeons there that were talking, and I was sitting there, it's a shout-out to Dr. Dom, I was sitting next to him, and I could follow two of them. The third one, geez, I don't even...I mean, he was using anacronyms and whatever, but I said, well, it's time for me to leave. But I would suggest anyone, and speak to your physician, because there are certain guidelines and criteria that are now in place for screening relative to lung cancer, that you do that, because we live in an area that seems to have maybe a little more than its share of incidences. And, thank you. Oh, I will say, what...just as a follow-up, one of the physicians there who was giving the talk, he was using Yogi Berra euphemisms or comments, so I'll leave you with one tonight. When you get to the fork in the road, take it.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
First thing, last Saturday, the Currituck kids had the gobbler jogger, and we had 110 participants in that race, which really helped push us through our goal of reaching 50,000 by 2015, so that we could continue with scholarships for a Currituck child for way beyond my years. And I want to thank the volunteers that came out there, and some of my colleagues up here on the board that were there to volunteer and also assist with that. It was a great event, and looking forward to it again next year. On the same token, I was going to mention the Senior Craft Fair, but I also have, the Moyoc women are doing a Kris Kringle craft show from 10 to 5 at Moyoc Elementary this Saturday, the 21st, from 10 to 5. And the profits from that will go towards purchasing books for kids in Currituck. So again, you know, you've got another opportunity to see some outstanding craftsmanship from our local person, so please come out and join us at Moyoc Elementary.
Ms. Gilbert, I had someone ask me after last meeting, how do they get on your event calendar so that you will tout their event? Can they email you?
You may email me, you can come and talk to me. Everybody asks me how to get on my social calendar, and this is what I do.
Well, I didn't want to just give them your phone number or email address.
Okay, 757-536-374, that's my cell phone number.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Payman?
A few things. First of all, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that there's a lot of individuals in our county that, you know, that dreaded disease of cancer has been affecting a lot of people that I went to school with, some people in here went to school with. It just...it seems like it just seemed more and more of in our community, and I just want to just say, just make sure you think of those individuals, and any way you can always try to help them with their families, and say a special prayer for them, because it's just a need out there, and prayers can help a lot, and I just wanted to acknowledge that in our community. Secondly, the Lower Currituck County last Saturday as well had their third annual turkey shoot, and it almost doubled the amount of support from last year, the previous year, which goes a long ways in helping the fire departments, helping some of the needs that they...the funding for some of their needs that they get. And they just wanted to say, express a thank you to the community for supporting them, supporting the fire departments, and anything else you can do by volunteering, getting involved. They still need...they still need volunteers, bodies, people to help, you know, fight the fires and all that, but they're really appreciative, and just wanted to express their thanks on that. And just to piggyback a little bit on Commissioner Hall, I was over in Liberty City last weekend with my wife at the PetSmart over there, and we saw some Currituck individuals over there with their shirts on. They had their dogs out there, and they were promoting the adoption of Currituck animals over there. I was really thankful to see that, and we talked to them for a little bit, and they were telling people that came in there that, hey, come over to Currituck County, we've got some animals over there that could need some adoption. I was glad to see that over there. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Adler?
I'll sit here this evening and tell you, I'm very familiar with lung cancer. Took my mother from me at age 33, when I was 12 years old, many, many years ago, lung cancer. So, but anyhow, so, yeah, it is a terrible disease, and it's way too much of it. On a better note, Mr. Scanlon and myself, Tuesday will be attending...Thursday? Thursday will be attending a solid waste management board meeting. I happen to chair that board, and we're meeting in McWilliams, I believe it is. Anyhow, the whole point of this particular meeting is to allow Washington County to join into our seven or eight county group. They're buying into it. Everybody seems to think it's a good idea. All the lawyers have done everything. I've got a packet about that thick that I've got to read and understand before Thursday. But anyhow, just to let you know, you know, I know one of the things we're supposed to do is report on our side stuff at our comment period, so I'm reporting. Thank you.
No, yes, ma'am.
One other thing. I just, between now and our next meeting, we'll have a Thanksgiving holiday, and for everything that everyone's set up here tonight, I just want everybody to count your blessings and hug the people that are close to you. and hug the people that are close to you.
Mr. Idlet, did you and I spoke about the RPO and the ferries. Did you have a chance to speak with the manager about the best way to put forward our request?
I have not spoke with him. He's been kind of hard to get a hold of Friday and today, for whatever reason. I did send an email back to you and to him. I think he answered back to that email.
I've seen the email. I mean, do you want this board to take a official position requesting that they reconsider their position?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was deferring to Mr. Idlet, though, because he is the RPO representative, and...
I would prefer to do it in a joint resolution, if we can get, you had indicated you were going to get in touch with the county manager, Rich, in Hyde County, and if you'll get in touch with him. I was just kind of waiting to hear what he had to say, and I think...
I guess a quick explanation is, Currituck and Hyde County...
Quite frankly, we need, if we're going to do one, we need to send it to all the...
Correct.
All of them, not just one, to all.
But Currituck and Hyde County have ferries that aren't told, and Mr. Idlet, as our representative, and I have been discussing the possibility of doing a resolution, asking the other RPO members to take no action on ferry tolls until after the short session. We've been given some pretty strong assurances that the replacement of ferries can be addressed in the budget this year, and thus eliminate the need for the tolls and take the ferry replacement out of the RPO, which has created a, I don't want to say us versus them, but it's created some tension about how to replace the ferries.
Take $100 million expenditure out of a $30 million annual budget.
Correct. So there'd never be any roads fixed if we had to go that route. So anyways...
But, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree. I just, like I say, two things. I would like for Hyde, since we're partners in crime in this thing, I would certainly like for them to be joint with us, and then send it...
Because we're running out of time. It needs to be at our next agenda, whatever we're going to do.
Yes, sir.
Will you get in touch, and we'll...
Yes.
All right, and that's all I had. Mr. Manager, you have anything to report?
Just one item. We have been advised that the contractor that has been handling our glass at our recyclables centers, there really is no market now for glass, and so as of today, it actually could be easier for our citizens. You no longer will have to separate your glass from all other recyclable materials, and all of that now will be collected as a single stream at our convenience centers, and that should have started today. When the glass containers are removed, they just won't be brought back in there, and you just put all recyclables, all of it, can be just dumped in one container now.
Well, I can probably speak for a lot of our citizens. They probably didn't know they were supposed to be removing the glass from the regular trash. Or, okay.
There's things like light bulbs, batteries, electronics, there's a handful of things that have, are required to be specialized, are specially handled and stuff, and so all of those have to be...
Well, I know all those things are being done.
Glass and glass paper, plastic, all that now can be combined in one container.
Okay. I'm going to open the public comment. We have three people signed up. I ask you to restate your name and address for the record. First, we have Ms. Judy Penny.
Judy Penny, I live on Puddin' Ridge Road in Moayak. And before I start speaking on what I came to say, the Moayak dump, everybody does the breakup of the glass at that one. You're always hearing glass dumped into the thing there, so they'll have to make room in the other recyclable container for that. What I am about to say sounds very harsh, but I feel it needs to be said in order to make my point. I think that we, that is Currituck County, should be trying very hard not to be a potential segment on the local six o'clock news, unless it's a segment on how good a job we are doing with regard to our new multimillion-dollar animal shelter, and how Currituck County is transitioning from having the shelter run by volunteers to now being run by the county. The volunteers are absolutely vital and necessary, so I would expect to see a working-together, shoulder-to-shoulder effort, along with a complete transparency of information regarding all aspects of shelter activity between the volunteers and the new staff, who receive a paycheck for taking care of the animals. Now, I'm not saying that salaried employees cannot also be animal lovers, because I want to believe, and I think it's very important, that whoever is hired to take care of the animals should indeed be someone who cares about the animals. As a comparison, I would also hope that doctors and nurses who get paid for their care to human beings are no less compassionate than doctors and nurses who volunteer their services. For me and a lot of folks, the care and welfare of the shelter animals is of paramount importance. Unfortunately, I realize that some people are mainly concerned with the money-budget aspect of this situation. Okay, then, if efficiency is considered more of a priority than the animals themselves, I would still suggest that the utmost attention be paid to the care, treatment, and welfare of the animals at all stages of their confinement at the shelter, from beginning to end. People keep telling me that progress in Currituck is inevitable, and that things need to move forward. Well, let's refer to our new state-of-the-art shelter as a portion of that progress. We are trying to encourage people to want to live and work here. Let's show everyone that we are more than capable of doing the right thing for our four-legged friends. Let's show that Currituck County is up to the task of being humane and caring while running our new state-of-the-art shelter. Please allocate the appropriate and necessary time, attention, and oversight to this very important endeavor. Let's make an effort not to have personality issues or tactical differences interfere with what is the reason for all of this, our animal population here in Currituck. Let's try not to have some negligent scandal or atrocity be the reason the newly-run shelter gets any media attention. Wouldn't we rather have Currituck County noticed and recognized for what a super job we're doing to house, care for, and adopt out our lost and homeless animals? I believe that we owe, I believe we owe this to all of us who are animal lovers, and to all of us who are taxpayers, but also, we owe it to the Currituck animals, who have no voice and who rely on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvia Apostolos.
Sylvia Apostolos, Coin Jock. I'm a little nervous, and it's almost past my bedtime, so bear with me.
Don't be nervous. Don't be nervous.
(laughing) The new animal shelter may look beautiful, but the important part is what goes on inside and outside of it, of how it is operated and what the goals are. With the understanding, I'm sorry, see, I told you I was tired. With it, under the supervision of the newly-created Department of Animal Services and Control, and the director of that being the former head of animal control, with no humane organization involved, and she reports to the county manager, who also has no experience in working with an animal shelter, as has many other responsibilities. It appears that the focus is not on saving the lives of as many animals as possible as rehoming them. According to the article in the Daily Affairs, there are at times only about half as many dogs and cats in the shelter as there were when it was operated by a humane society organization. Why is this? Currituck is growing, not getting smaller. Isn't keeping more animals longer to give them time to be adopted why we're building a new shelter? PetSmart had their Super Adoption this past weekend, which usually results in numerous animals getting adopted. The SPCA of northeastern North Carolina from Elizabeth City was there with animals, as was the Humane Paws Group from Hurtford. Why weren't animals from the Currituck Animal Shelter there? The Animal Lovers Assistance League offered a couple of months ago to help provide this for the Currituck shelter animals. Also was there was AL, where animals were there. When I called our shelter last week to ask what happened to a non-socialized kitten, if I brought it to the shelter, I was told that they would euthanize it immediately. Since the shelter had only half of the number of cats they used to have, space was available. Sometimes it just takes a little time and effort to socialize kittens. According to the newspaper, they are so understaffed, especially in the animal care, that they don't even consider giving the kittens a chance for life. This is not what the people of Currituck County want. I believe that the citizens of Currituck County would feel much more comfortable about the well-being of animals in this county, and have shown that they'd be willing to give donations if they were an experienced nonprofit humane organization operating the new animal shelter. Unquestionably, their goal is to save the lives of animal, which is what the people of Currituck want. Please return the shelter to the operation of a humane organization. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I've got one more speaker, but I read a newspaper article, and I didn't read anything that has been said, is, do you want to comment, or do you want to wait till after the next speaker?
I mean, I've heard two speakers here, and I've heard Commissioner Hall's comment. I'm surprised and taken aback with some of the comments. There seems to be some implication here that we have gone out there and either mass euthanized, or, I mean, I hear a comment that there's half as many animals. That's just not the case. We did not go out there and mass euthanize. Most of the animals that were there are there. We do not put cats down, or any animal down. By law, you've got to have them, I think, at least 72 hours, so no animal is put down immediately when it's brought in there. We do have volunteers that have been coming out. I can't speak to the article. The staff is telling me that they did not speak to a reporter who came out. If someone came out there, they didn't identify themselves as a reporter. The photograph that was in the part of the picture was a stock photograph from when the previous operator had the building. It was not a current photograph at all. It didn't even have our current staff. It goes back to when Animal Lover Assistance League had operated the facility. Yes, we had some growing pains in the first week taking over. There was certainly some mistakes made. The staff is learning from that, but we do have folks coming out. We do have people volunteering for us. The volunteers are certainly welcome, and what I've been told by the staff, they're coming out. They're engaged, and we are not euthanizing the animals. That is some kind of implication that we're out there, that we're not. That's just simply not the case.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just want to make a comment as well. I mean, I was just, in my neighborhood, like, today, actually, there's a big fundraising going on, and they're canvassing the whole neighborhood, that the children are doing a fundraiser, and I think it was involved with the school system, too, and they're trying to get a lot of participation, because they're asking for food donations and all that, and they're asking, because they want to give it to the animal shelter, is what it stated. So I knew, I mean, there's groups out there that are supporting it, because I just got that announcement today.
We have groups supporting this, and I think there's a lot of compassion, there's a lot of passion, there's a lot of emotion in this conversation. There's a significant amount of misinformation being passed around on social media. I think what I'm most pleased with is Commissioner Hall's comment. I mean, he went out there, and what he saw does not seem to be consistent with what he was being told or what he has read. He went out and found the staff to be engaging, polite. The shelter was organized. It appeared to be well-managed. And so I encourage people to come out to the shelter and witness for themselves and form their own opinion about how the system is being operated, and whether the staff there is truly engaging, and you'll find that they are, and that we do want volunteers, and we have, I mean, volunteers have been coming out and have been assisting with the operation.
Okay. Ms. Sykes, you're next.
My name's Ginger Sykes. I live at 111 Mallard Drive in Currituck. And first, I'd like to thank Mike Payman, Mayor and Gilbert, and Mike Hall for helping us with the Bark in the Park, which was very successful, and Mother Nature played a part in that, and the Department of Tourism also played a part in having our normal people and other people from Currituck, who were there with their dogs by the hundreds, come from as far away as Newport News, Hurtford, and so forth, and other places in, out of the Currituck area. Frankly, I was amazed by what I heard said a few minutes ago about the committee for helping at the shelter. I would think that, since you have in charge right now a former animal control officer, whose mindset and whole role and background is in retrieving animals and in doing court cases for animal cruelty, I would think you would welcome having a humane organization be a part of it, and you would gain a lot of confidence with having an advisory board, but even more confidence from the people of this county by having a humane organization be involved in the operation of the shelter. Just for your information, I also heard Mr. Scanlon a few minutes ago mention the Adopt-a-thon and willingness to help with Adopt-a-thons and so forth. This is an email I'm going to pass around to you. It's dated September 11th, and it's offering to help with, by Animal Lover's Assistance League with Adopt-a-thons for the shelter animals. And as I heard a lady say a few minutes ago, we did do an Adopt-a-thon this past weekend at the, for the Super Adopt-a-thon they had at PetSmart in Chesapeake, and Animal Lover's Assistance League was the only group from Currituck there. And we welcomed, and I met with Gina Mauer, the, your appointed overseer of the Animal Services and Control, I met with her today, and reminded her that we were more than willing to help with Adopt-a-thons, but they have to, as far as having the shelter animals involved, they must make some of the arrangements, because obviously, they would know the animals, and we wouldn't know them as well. Also, I was there donating the leftover doggie treats we had from the Bark in the Park for the animals at the shelter, and that was a treat for me, too. Also, just for your information, there are a lot of programs that humane organizations and nonprofits do that are not expected, are not usually done by animal control-operated facilities, like we do, we've provided almost 10 years now a kind newsletter in the school system, things like that. Here's a program, I would love to see us get started. I'm going to read a little bit. I hope it doesn't take me over my time here, and this is called Purina, and shelters encourage pet adoptions among older adults. A pet's playful kisses or snuggly nature is often enough to make a person smile, regardless of his or her age. A recent pet survey by Purina among adults aged 60 and older, 84% said their pet makes them happier, 66% said their pet helps keep their mind active and memory sharp, and 45% said they spend more time doing physical activities, such as walking, now that they have a pet. This is the kind of thing that a humane organization can bring and enhance for the services of our animal shelter. I agree with whoever said that our staff seems to be doing a fine job. As the article in the newspaper pointed out, they are understaffed, and I hope that you can rectify that error as soon as possible. And I think we pointed out in September to you that you were 4,000 hours short in your staffing criteria. Other thing, I think the people of Currituck would like and have a much more, have greater confidence in the operation of the shelter if they were, if they felt that the nonprofit organizations, the humane organizations, were involved in the operation of the shelter, because their goal, that of humane organizations, is to save animals. And as I've mentioned to you once before, in national research, they have shown that the people, the majority of people, I believe it was around 65% or more of people in America, think that the main role of an animal shelter should be the saving and rehoming of animals, simply by doing what was originally planned for this beautiful facility that you're building, which was have it shared by a humane organization and animal control. You would allow the fears and concerns that many of the citizens have, and you would show through your actions that you have that compassion for animals at heart. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sykes, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is there anything that's preventing you from doing any of that? Is there anything that's preventing you from doing the newsletter?
Well, we're obviously trying to do Adopt-a-thons, I mean, going back to over two months ago.
We had a email, but I mean, is there anything institutional that's preventing you from doing any of the things you just said that a humane organization can do?
It's not, good question. It's not usually the focus of an animal control-oriented organization, such as our animal control, who does the fine job... such as our animal control, who does a fine job for the most part, by the way. It's not their niche in life to do some of these specialized programs. At many, I've been going to Adopt-a-Thons for, hate to tell you how many years.
On time.
Quite a few decades.
Yeah.
And quite a few, and I have, I cannot remember having seen an animal control organization at the Adopt-a-Thons, for example, at PetSmart.
And that's my point. What in, within the organization is preventing you from doing the very things that you've always done?
Right now, as you can see from the note here, we've asked to be involved in helping as volunteers with doing Adopt-a-Thons, the program I was just talking about for seniors. That would be a program that you really would have to have someone more or less involved with the animals, because you've got to know the animals to match them with the senior. You can't just have the senior walk in and say, "That's a pretty dog," and all of a sudden the dog shows his teeth and nips the person. You've got to have that familiarity, for lack of a better word, by whoever is matching up, say, Dogs for Senior Event. And you may recall, I think you, I believe some of you, I'm not sure if you did, Paul, but I think some of you have been to the programs that we've had in the summer over at the shelter when Animal Lovers operated it, and we had programs for children on pet nutrition. We had, one time, one summer, we had a young lady bring her dogs in that she had trained and showed children how to go about training their pets. These are the kind of things that humane organizations, if they can be integrated into the whole matrix, can bring about and further the humane education and the adoption of animals and gain a lot of, a lot from the public and confidence.
What you're telling me is you don't feel like you guys have been integrated in to help with these things?
Correct.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any reason, Ginger, were you given a reason why the Adopt-a-Thon, we didn't participate? Or, I mean, I don't, I'm hearing this for a second. I mean, is there?
I don't want to embarrass anyone, but I will tell you that when, after I had sent the letter that you have in your hand, or email, the coordinator of activities there, I spoke on the phone, and, you know, we were talking somewhat about this, and I, and she told me she was so busy getting ready to enter the new shelter and so much to be done, this was in September, that she didn't have time to make that phone call to organize having the Currituck Animal Shelter participate in the Super Adopt-a-Thon.
It just totally makes my point, simply, just because of the one-time occurrence, and we're jumping through hoops to get everything running, okay, we missed something. There'll be another Adopt-a-Thon.
Yes.
And that works the next time.
We'd be delighted for it, too.
Integrated now. We're in. We're making strides.
We want to be a part. You're exactly right.
We've been saying that since the beginning.
Mr. Scanlon.
This is just another example of something I find incredibly confusing. But let me start out saying that we have every intent and desire to work with not only the Animal Lovers Assistance League, but the Currituck SPCA or any other humane group that's out there. She's referencing a September email. She just made a comment that she, in September, she called the coordinator.
Yes.
We didn't have staff in September.
No, but it was, you'll notice.
We didn't operate that, no, we.
But you'll see, it says for November and December. It says it on the email.
But you said you called and talked to a shelter, the coordinator, but the Currituck County didn't even hire staff in September, so whoever she talked to was not a Currituck County employee because we didn't even hire anybody. We didn't take over in September. We didn't take over in October. So she's referencing an email, which I appreciate. We do accept her offer to do Adopt-a-Thons, but we've only been in the building two, this is the start of what, our third week, and so the folks she's talked to were not county employees and had nothing to do with the operation of this shelter. So I'm assuming if she talked in September, she was talking to the Currituck SPCA staff. But the bottom line is, we have every intention of working with Ginger and with the ALA folks. We have every intention to work, we'll work with, we need the folks to come out and work with us. To imply in some fashion that Currituck County, the staff there is not going to be humane, I think, I think is ridiculous. The staff there, it destroys that staff to have to euthanize animals. They sit out there and they do provide care every single day to these animals. It is not their interest and their desire to go turn around at the next week and have to euthanize them. It's not what they want to do either. We want to have the best care for these animals, and we want to get these animals adopted just as much as they do, and we have absolutely would partner with them and anybody else that wants to come out and help these animals find good, caring homes for them to be, to belong to. It's always been our interest, so for, to somehow assume that our interest is not aligned because we are a unit of government, it just isn't, it's just not the facts. And again, I would encourage anybody to go out, to meet the staff, and to see the shelter, and see for themselves how things are being operated, and then certainly I would be happy to talk to them about any concerns or complaints they have. But absolutely, we want to work with these groups and adopt the animals. But it's, again, it's not our desire to go out there and euthanize. That is a horrible, horrible thing to have to do, and it's certainly the dark side of running a shelter, the fact that we have to do it at all.
I think Mr. Scanlon doesn't have a copy of what I just passed around. Okay, so you'll notice who it was addressed to.
Excuse me.
And who the conversation was with a week later.
Pardon me?
That was an employee of the county.
Ms. Sykes, please. I don't want anybody to think that I was implying the county is not doing that. I was trying to find from her specifically what it is she's saying. And it's, the county has not done anything to discourage anyone from being out there that I'm aware of.
My knowledge, the, any group out here can, they can run a shelter. They can do all the things that has been suggested. They could do it in and of themselves. They can do it in collaboration with other nonprofits. They can do it in collaboration with Currituck County. We, again, welcome that collaboration and are looking forward to that collaboration, but there's nothing to prevent them. In fact, we're already working with our senior coordinator about how to integrate the senior population, and so the pet, I saw that, we're already working on a program there, and I think with Ginger's experience that we could just make that program a whole lot better. So no, we'd love to work with them. Never said we didn't want to work with them.
All right. Mr. Payment.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. When I was at the PetSmart last week, the organization out there had their Currituck shirts on, but I mean, it wasn't the ALAL group. It was another humane group in Currituck County, but they, they were out there with their dogs and promoting adoption and all that. I just, but, I mean, they were, they were promoting the adoption of Currituck animals, and they had their Currituck shirts on. So I was glad to see them, but it was just, it was a different group, and I saw PetSmart here. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. That's all we have. Signed up. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak?
I'd like to say something, if I could, real quick, for anybody else.
Yes, sir.
The email she does have is assigned to a Currituck County address, employee address. So I'm not sure what happened there. So it is assigned to that. And second of all, I don't see anybody from one of the other nonprofits, and those were comments that were also made to me, that the employees, and again, I say dropped the ball, or the county dropped the ball, or we, the commissioners, dropped the ball, but we did. And the fact that when we had a chance to reach out, or when they reached out to us, including the other nonprofit, we're very busy trying to get ready to move into the new place, to get everything ready. And instead of engaging them, we have put them off, or said, "Yeah, you can do it," but we haven't extended our hand to say, "Okay, you know, how can we help you?" Because we have a lot of things going on right now, and this other group could have helped. I think that's the point of what the people that contacted me, saw me, may have said today, including the SPCA, which isn't here, I don't think. So I think it's not the fact of an indictment of saying that, you know, we want to put animals down. It's the fact that we haven't engaged back. We're saying, "Yeah, come on and talk to us." We haven't reached out also. I think it's a two-way street, and that's where we failed.
All right. I'm going to, I already closed the public comments. We're moving on.
Can I say something? Oh.
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, you need to come forward and give us your name and address.
My name's Phyllis Hobert, and I live on 119 White Herring Drive in Currituck. And I have PJ's Thrift Store, and one of my employees is well-known in the area, and her son called her last week and said he and his girlfriend broke up, and he let her have the cat till he could come and pick it up. Well, she took it to the SPCA, and he called his mother, and she was upset. She called, and they said, "We do have the kitten here. It's going to be put down this evening at six o'clock." Well, she ran down there and got the kitten. It had been there two weeks, but don't they give them a little bit longer than two weeks? Because the mother didn't know the cat was there, but her son called after he found out it was down there. And they were very upset. So two weeks don't seem like it's a long time to keep a kitten, since you don't have that many down there anyway.
Thank you. I just have one question. Are we to believe that ALAL never put animals down?
Animal Lovers Assistance League did put down animals when we ran out of space and had exhausted all opportunities. And I will mention one other little quick thing. You may recall that at another point in time, we have mentioned that a humane organization, at least ours, I can't speak for every humane organization, has operated the shelter by contributing approximately $100,000 or more per year for the last several years to it. But as far as euthanasia is concerned, it was done on only the basis when animals were either very aggressive or we just could not have, we did not have any more space. Thank goodness you're building a larger shelter, and that will hopefully keep pace with the expansion of this county for a long time.
I'm just going to make the point that the county is going to do the same thing, and to imply, I take offense to imply that the county is out there looking for animals to put down when the Animal Lovers Assistance League has records of animals they've put down, too. It's a part of running a shelter. It's horrible. Nobody likes it, but you've put animals down, too.
But the length of stay was very long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to ask, Ginger, you said that you guys had run the shelter and contributed $100,000, $100,000 a year?
Yes, sir.
So does that mean if you don't run the shelter, those contributions are cut off now just because you can't be in charge?
I'm glad you asked the question, because one of the things I didn't get a chance to mention, and I hope this is going out on broadcast, we are working on and have right now some foster homes for animals that we are trying to rehome, and dogs, and one of our people who has been doing fostering of cats for us just had some serious problems with cancer, and we're looking for some places to foster cats right now. So if anyone knows of any, please contact us. That, the money that we have raised goes towards spay neuter, goes towards rehoming animals, putting up fences, trying to save the lives of animals in this region of, you know, in Currituck and this area.
So you didn't have to do any of that when you run the animal shelter. Same types of things you're describing now, if your money isn't going to be spent on, you didn't have to do when you run the shelter. I guess my point simply is this. If the money is for the care and the well-being of the animals, well, it shouldn't make any difference who runs the shelter. That same money will take care of them, no matter who manages and runs the shelter. That's my point. And so, thank you.
All right. We're going to take a motion to go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county manager in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and GS 143-318.11A6 to discuss a personnel matter. Do we have that as a motion?
I'll move.
Have a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.